Mayor's staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council, sitting concurrently, will come to order with the clerk. Please call the rolls so that we might establish a court.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here. I would ask our executive director of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, LaShel Dozier, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We have one consent item and one public hearing and one discussion item for this afternoon. We want to try to get done, if we can, by 3:30, no later than 4:00, if possible. If we can kind of keep that in mind. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there any questions or members have any concerns? Is there public testimony?
I have no callers on the consent calendar.
All right, I take a motion then, members.
So move, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Harris. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Thank you. The consent calendar passes now nine to nothing. Let's go to the first public hearing. This is a housing authority item. I'll turn it over to Ms. Dozier and her team.
We have Christine Wicker that is going to do the presentation on Project at 39th and Broadway, one that's a long time in the making, and we're really excited about it.
Yes, good afternoon, Council Christine Wicker, SHRA. The report before you is approval of financing for the 39th and Broadway senior apartments. The developer-related company of California who wanted to SHRA's request for proposals and was selected as a developer for five housing authority-owned parcels and also brought an additional privately-held parcel to the project. The proposed new construction project will be located at a vacant site in Oak Park community. The 43-unit project includes seven studios and 36 one-bedroom units with affordability restrictions of between 30% and 60% of area income. Many's include a community room, a community garden, and courtyard patio. Related is the developer, and Jon Stewart Company will be the property manager, and Life Matters will be the resident service provider. Life Matters will provide 15 hours of resident onsite resident services in addition to the 20 hours of onsite services at the adjacent arbors at Oak Park Senior Community. Residents from either side of the development will be able to access services at both sites. And when completed, development will be managed in conjunction with the arbors at Oak Park, an existing 56-unit senior development also owned by Related. Prior to selling the parcels, SHRA will remove the soil contaminants attributed to the previous dry cleaner on the adjacent site. It'll be about $630,000 of home funds to pay for the environmental remediation costs. In addition to the $6.1 million SHRA loans to developer, financing includes 9% low-income housing tax credits, a conventional loan, deferred developer fee, fee waivers, and a seller carryback for the land. Entitlements been approved and subject to council's approval. Related will apply for tax credits on July 1st and is successfully awarded. Construction is anticipated to begin in spring of 2022. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the 39th and Broadway senior development financing and is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, very good. We do have one member of the public who's called in to testify or comment. Let's take the public testimony, please.
Thank you. May I have the caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the Housing Authority City Council.
Good afternoon. My name is Anatol Gavriluk, and it'd be an honor to speak in front of you. My question will be regarding the Broadway senior apartment. If this project will have any requirements like local hire, any area standard wages and benefits?
Sure. So this project is subject to federal prevailing wages because the funding source is home, which comes to SHRA from HUD. So state, sorry, federal prevailing wages required. In addition, SHRA's procurement department will be monitoring local hiring and other requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. We do have one more caller. May I have that caller, please?
Oh, go ahead. Yes, please.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the Housing Authority City Council.
Hello. My name is Patricia, and I'm calling to comment on item two on your agenda for the 39th and Broadway senior apartments. As the council takes this project into consideration, please keep in mind that local construction matters. Reinvesting in our community matters. My questions are, will there be a commitment to utilize local hire? Will the contractor be required to provide workers' healthcare? Will the contractor be required to pay the air standard wages on all this, on this project? And four, will the project reinvest in education of the next generation by requiring the use of state-certified apprenticeship? Projects with no commitment or contractor requirements just add to the downward pressure on our community and its workers. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for calling in. We appreciate it. Let me turn it over now to the City Council and begin with Vice Mayor Chenier.
Actually, Mayor, if Christine or someone from SHRA wants to answer those questions, maybe we can start there.
Okay.
Yes, so, yes, as I previously said, prevailing wages, federal prevailing wages will be paid. And so before we begin any project here at SHRA, we sit down with the developer, their general contractor, we will go over the requirements of, there's section three and other, other local hire requirements. They have to, we monitor that throughout construction. We require them to submit monthly forms to us. So we are very aware that local, local hire and prevailing wages are very important to projects like this. So we will be monitoring that.
And Christine, do you want to address the healthcare issue, which I believe is included when you do prevailing wage, correct?
I believe most of the contractors do provide healthcare when prevailing wages are being paid. I could get back to you for sure, though.
Well, we had that question with Aggie Square, and my memory of that is, yes. Health benefits are included.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then as far as the local hire, what's the process for working with the community to ensure that we get some percentage of local hire on this?
They do have to reach out and get several bids, and there are points that are given that if you are minority-owned business, women-owned business, or local hire.
Okay. So, thank you. Appreciate that. So I just want to thank SHRA for moving this project forward. It has taken a while. I think it's a good project, and it's a good project in combination with the arbors. I think there's economies of scale there. And so I think the overall level of service could actually be improved just because of those economies of scale. So I'm going to go ahead and move this item. I do want to make one other comment, and I'm hoping that this gets addressed in the workshop as we move forward this afternoon. And really spending some time and discussion around the types and elements of housing that we want. So what do we need most? Is it single-studio apartments? Is it one bedrooms? Is it more two and three bedrooms for families? We have done, and this is not necessarily a bad thing at all, but we have done a lot of seniors recently. We have the Donner Property, which will be a senior property. We have the arbors and this related property. We have property downtown that Mr. Hanson was working on. Those are all senior projects, and I don't know, we talked about this a little bit. I don't know that we had done many of them in the past or in the recent past. So again, I'm not saying that's the wrong thing to do, but I hope included in our discussion for the council is where our priorities should be, and whether it's singles, whether it's families, but having that balance as we move forward. So with that, hope, I want to move this item.
Terrific. Thank, congratulations both to SHRA and to you, Vice Mayor Chenier, for bringing this one across the finish line. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor.
I'll have to second the motion. Okay, we've got Councilmember Geta and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
And Vice Mayor Chenier, would you mind opening and closing the public hearing?
It would be my pleasure. I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions were mostly answered, and if I could just get a clear answer on the healthcare piece, you know, reporting back, that would be helpful. I know you said that you think that's the case, but I just, I'd like to make sure we get some clear, some clarity on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's already been seconded. Glad it supports the project.
Good, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to lift up some of Vice Mayor Chenier's comments around the need for housing. Some of you may have seen a story recently where a encampment of senior citizens was facing relocation very recently. And I repeat this story often to folks because, first of all, I'm like, how on earth did we get to the point where we've got encampments of senior citizens on our streets and along our rivers? But also to really illustrate just the extreme level of need for housing of all types. And so really excited this project is moving forward. And thank you, SHRA and Vice Mayor Chenier, for your work on that.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Let us call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Congratulations again, and thank you. That passes nine to nothing. Thank you, Christine Wicker. Appreciate it, your team. Okay. We move now to the workshop, the Housing Element Workshop. I want to make just a couple of brief opening comments to sort of set the stage. This is an easy one to sort of pass by and just, you know, let it go. Formal submission to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. It's really, really important, and we had to continue it from April the 7th because of our packed agenda. But we're hearing it this afternoon, and this is incredible work product by the city team and the city staff specifically. And I just want to thank Greta Seuss, who we're going to hear from in a moment, Matt Hurtel, Greg Sandlin and Tom Pace, Chelsea Payne, and the Ascent Team who drafted the element. They're also the consultants working with us on the homeless master siding plan. Danielle Foster, SHRA, everybody who was involved in this, the Housing Policy Work Group, the Housing Alliance, of course, the BIA and the Realtors, all who have weighed in, and I understand are supporting it. This is a key guidepost for solving, or at least making better, our most significant community challenge. And yes, as the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Valenzuela said, this is a call for us to expand the kind, the types of housing that we build in Sacramento or that we redevelop or revitalize. We are not voting today, by the way, members of the public, on the R1 to R4 controversy. That actually will be addressed formally through the General Plan and Zoning Ordinance. It may be discussed today, but we're not voting on that today. But expanding housing types, establishing new funding sources, because money is so crucial, revising our parking ordinances to make sure that we can create more density, identifying surplus lands, which we're doing a great job of, by the way, within the homeless master plan effort. And then I would say, one category that is not on my notes here, but it may be as important as money, and that is the community's willingness to embrace inclusivity, to say yes in my backyard, to say yes to siding decisions. We cannot address the homeless problem. We cannot address the affordable housing problem unless the community, through broad consensus, consistently says yes. Let's get started. Ms. Seuss.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Okay, if you could confirm that you can see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Greta Seuss. I'm an associate planner in long-range planning. And as you mentioned, Mayor, on April 6th, council authorized submission of the draft housing element to the state for their six-week day review, but requested that staff return for a more focused workshop on the housing element. So during this workshop today, I'll present the key goals and programs that are included in the revised draft 2021 to 2029 housing element and represent the city's commitment to addressing the housing shortage. The city received its formal comment letter from HCD on June 7th indicating what changes must be made prior to state certification of the city's housing element. Today's input and revisions required by HCD will be incorporated into the final draft housing element that's anticipated to return to council for final adoption on August 17th. And the city must adopt a final housing element by September 12th. The housing element is the city's eight-year housing strategy and is its plan for how it will accommodate our fair share of the regional housing need. It's an element of the general plan, but unlike the general plan, which has a 20-year timeframe, the housing element has an eight-year planning period. There are a lot of requirements in state law for what needs to be addressed in the housing element, and before the city can adopt it, it must be reviewed and certified by the state for compliance with state law. The two main components of the housing element are the inventory of sites to accommodate our regional housing need and the goals, policies, and programs that provide direction for implementing our housing goals. While there are many requirements in state law for what needs to be included in the housing element, the draft plan has been developed to be streamlined and user-friendly. The document is organized into several main chapters, summarizing the city's eight-year housing strategy and includes all the more technical data and analysis used to inform the housing element in nine separate appendices. The 2021 to 2029 housing element period housing target is 45,580 housing units. If the city is to meet this target, we must produce about 5,700 units annually across all income levels. 2020 was our largest number of new housing units produced since 2006. However, even in this banner year, we were still 2,000 units short to meet our actual need. The housing element includes eight goals that create the framework for how the city will address our housing needs. Within each goal section, the policies and implementation programs provide direction for how the city will achieve that goal. The goals, policies, and programs were developed with extensive community input and reflect the city's ambition to create equitable and inclusive neighborhoods and to construct a variety of housing types at all levels of affordability. The heart of the housing element is found in the implementation programs that the council and staff commit to implementing and reporting on annually to the state over the next eight years. These are also the key point of discussion today. I'll review key implementation programs, including those outlined in the Staff Report Policies and Program Summary, attachment found on pages four through 10 of the Staff Report. While I will present the key, the key programs by goal section today, the Housing Element Implementation Chapter is organized by implementation timeframe from short, medium, and long-term and annual and ongoing. There are 48 programs total, and staff is committing to implementing many programs in the short term to increase housing production. Through the next slides, bolded implementation programs are those included in the Staff Report Policies and Program Summary Attachment, found on pages four through 10 of the Staff Report. So Goal One is to increase overall housing production. Key implementation programs to achieve this are developing a web-based housing development toolkit, considering further eliminating parking minimums and exploring instituting parking maximums along transit corridors, targeted infill infrastructure strategies, and construction skills educational alignment. For Program Eight, Analysis and Community Outreach and Coordination with the City's Parking Services Division will be initiated in 2021. Recommended revisions to the Planning and Development Code's parking regulations are to be presented to City Council for consideration in 2021. Goal Two is to increase affordable and workforce housing production. Through the housing element, the city is committing to reviewing and evaluating the mixed-income housing ordinance and considering amendments to the ordinance with the goal of increasing the amount of affordable housing built in the city while ensuring requirements don't pose a constraint to overall housing production. Evaluated changes will include the consideration of a mandatory inclusionary housing component. The economic feasibility analysis for this will begin in 2021. In Program H3, the city is also committing to annually exploring new funding sources for affordable housing. Through Program H11, the city will be applying to receive a pro-housing designation, which staff will be bringing to council on June 29th to authorize the application for. To be awarded this designation, the city must adopt pro-housing policies that go beyond state law. Sorry. Among other programs, the housing element also commits the city to examining additional financing options for affordable housing, utilizing surplus public lands for affordable housing, continuing supporting housing for extremely low-income households, and supporting innovations in construction technology to build more affordable housing in less time and with fewer resources. Goal Three is to promote accessory dwelling units and facilitate the construction of at least 700 accessory dwelling units by 2029. As part of the housing element, the city is committing to developing an online ADU toolkit with resources and educational materials to support and promote the development of ADUs in neighborhoods throughout the city. Part of this toolkit will also be the development of permit-ready ADU plans for city residents that will be ADA-accessible and vary in square footage to accommodate a variety of ADU options. The city is also committed to identifying potential funding sources and community partners to develop and implement a financial assistance program that would provide loans or grants to encourage homeowners to construct an ADU with an agreement to charge rents for affordable, affordable for lower-income households or rent the ADU to housing choice voucher participants. Goal Four is to advance equity and inclusion in housing. To achieve this, the housing element includes programs to invest in historically underserved communities, work with community-based organizations and communities at risk of displacement to support collective ownership models, research best practices to reduce housing barriers for formerly incarcerated individuals, and promote compliance with existing state laws regarding affirmative marketing through education and outreach. Related to this goal, the housing element contains a policy to take meaningful actions to allow for a greater array of housing types throughout the city to create more inclusive and equitable neighborhoods and to affirmatively further fair housing. Although the housing element describes how allowing a greater array of housing types throughout the city helps meet the state requirements for, to affirmatively further fair housing and includes this policy, the housing element does not implement these changes. Changes to the allowed housing types in single-unit and duplex zones would be enacted through two steps. One is the adoption of the general plan update, and two is a subsequent update to the Planning and Development Code. The next major milestone for the 2040 general plan is the release of the draft document for public review anticipated for mid-September. The draft 2040 general plan will include policies related to the implementation of this key strategy. Goal Five is to protect residents from displacement. To achieve this, the housing element includes a program to review the effectiveness of the current Tenant Protection Act ordinance and consider changes that would strengthen the effectiveness of the current ordinance prior to the current sunset date in 2024. Additional programs include the continued provision of fair housing services to tenants and landlords, reviewing and evaluating the feasible implementation and impacts of the Rent Esco Account Program, and researching and identifying best practices for rental assistance. Goal Six is to preserve the existing housing stock. The city has an affordable housing preservation ordinance that will continue to be implemented. The housing also includes a program to continue the implementation of the Rental Housing Inspection Program, including identifying ways to improve the education and outreach for the program, and a program to provide grants for low and very low-income homeowners for emergency repairs and/or accessibility modifications to their homes, and identify funding to expand this program to include loans for larger repairs and all electric modifications. Goal Seven is to prevent the occurrences of homelessness and address the housing needs of people experiencing homelessness. The housing element includes a variety of policies to guide the city in addressing the homelessness crisis. However, the housing element is not intended to serve as a comprehensive homeless plan. Thus, the housing element calls for the city to develop a local homeless action plan and calls for developing meaningful metrics to understand the impact of different programs on helping to address the homelessness crisis. The policies and programs under this goal are supportive of the council's current work on the master siding plan. Goal Eight is to increase accessible housing. In addition to the inclusion of policies to continue implementation of the reasonable accommodation ordinance and prioritize financial assistance for affordable housing projects that exceed the minimum accessibility provisions of state and federal law, the housing element contains a program to review and update the Universal Design Ordinance and provide clarification on how and when the ordinance is applied. Staff is requesting council input on the HCD review draft housing element goals, policies, and programs. We recently received an official findings letter from HCD outlining required changes to the housing element in order to meet state law requirements. Staff will incorporate City Council feedback today and HCD feedback on the draft housing element and will return to Planning and Design Commission in July and City Council in August for adoption of the final housing element. HCD will have 90 days to complete the review of the city's housing element and provide their final approval and certification of the document. This concludes my presentation, and I am joined by our Housing Element Project Team to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank, oh, thank you very much again for a very thorough presentation and many months of work that went into this. Madam Clerk, do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have three callers.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Liz Loran Williams calling in today on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership. Downtown Sacramento Partnership would like to applaud the city for the significant undertaking of updating the city of Sacramento 2021/29 housing element. The Downtown Partnership would also appreciate the opportunity to participate in the development of the document through our involvement with the Housing Policy Working Group. The draft housing element presents key objectives to create an environment that promotes housing production and private sector investment in Sacramento. From minister approvals of housing projects to a comprehensive overhaul of the entitlement process, we applaud the city for improving the process to create a new housing, create new housing a priority. While the draft housing element highlights numerous policies and implementation initiatives, it's important to highlight that the city is at the mercy of market conditions and the ability to access capital markets. With that in mind, we urge you to continue to take steps to ensure that housing investments are met with a regulatory culture that supports production for all types of housing at all incomes. The draft housing element identifies key sources of funding that are available from the city and other sources to support projects that may not be feasible in the marketplace. The draft housing element identifies key sources of funding that are available from the city and other sources to support projects that may not be feasible in the marketplace. Any increase in the impact fees or new requirements may have deleterious impact on overall housing productions in the future. For example, modifications to the mixed income housing ordinance must carefully analyze the possible constraints to housing production. We strongly believe that a change to recently adopted ordinance is in direct conflict with the overarching goals of the draft housing element. While market conditions and access to capital play an integral role in achieving our housing targets, any policy changes intended to streamline the development process must be continuously reviewed and improved. Sacramento has made significant strides to streamline residential development while creating an environment that promotes housing production and private sector investment, but we can and must do better. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Adrian? For the housing line? The word? Uh, this? I had?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Caller, you seem to be cutting out. Do you want to restart? Caller, you have two minutes to address the council.
For the housing line? First, like to honor the work of the city to propose a draft element that has the prospect um throughout the region should take
We're not hearing you, caller. I'm sorry, but there's a bad connection.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll have staff call her back and encourage her to make some ecomments.
Okay. Thank you. All right, members, do we have anybody? I see council member Valens Wayla. Please go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and want to add what I heard briefly in the comments as they were cutting in and out, which was kudos to the staff for this really thorough and progressive housing element. I'm excited that we've gotten to this point. I'm really grateful for the process that we'll continue to embark on as we work to implement different pieces of this element and just thank you for all the time you've spent talking to me and my staff about this. And we came in a little midway. And I also want to note for folks who are interested in some of the specific points that, you know, at law and legislation, we've been talking about the tenant protection program and potential strengthening, and I hear from staff that that might be up as soon as July. So that conversation will be getting going and that the inclusionary and other sort of development policies will start talking in September. So I'm really looking forward to those deep discussions and just want to bring in an additional idea that's missing that I have mentioned to staff, but just for the public's benefit, looking at a vacancy tax in Sacramento. This is really excited that there's a policies in here that we're exploring around vacant parcel development and trying to get folks to to move those parcels one way or another rather than just sitting on them as empty spaces in communities. But I was also reading up on Oakland and other cities, and I know the Housing Working Group has talked about what a vacancy tax could look like in Sacramento, both for commercial and residential and for developed and undeveloped parcels. And so just want to flag that as something that I'm really interested in thinking about for Sacramento, whether it's for the two thousand and twenty-two election or another year, because I think it could be a really great tool in our toolbox to help ensure units are being moved into occupancy. So that's kind of my only other comments and thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Shneur.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Also, thanks to Danielle and to Matt and Greta for all the work on this. I think it's really good and appreciate you coming to some of the neighborhood meetings as well to help explain this. The the one question I have is I'm not sure where we are on opting a set of principles around the housing fund or housing trust fund that we put the thirty point five million dollars into or thirty-one point five million dollars into. But hoping that as we look at this document, that that translates pretty well into the principles so that we can, as we expend some of those funds, we're doing it aligned with with this housing element. And also want to just put a marker up. I I know affordable housing is a big piece of it. Workforce housing is part of the that goal. And we haven't discussed, you know, if if some funds out of the housing trust fund could go for workforce housing as well, which is obviously different and sometimes potentially much quicker than doing affordable financing. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Greta and planning staff, this is a really good piece of work and I do appreciate as council member Valens Wayla said, all the briefings that that my office has had. You know, one one thing about your presentation, Greta, that stands out to me is that despite our best efforts, we're stills, you know, in two thousand and twenty, two thousand units short of what we need to get to our goal of forty-five thousand units. And a lot of those pressures are the marketplace. You know, because of the pandemic and the spike in the cost of materials, the shortage of labor, these are things that we can't affect particularly through policies. I mean, it should not deter us from making policies that enable, you know, the production of housing. But the fact of the matter is, we are at the mercy of the marketplace and those pressures still come to bear. And, you know, back when we looked at our mixed income housing ordinance and and we decided to get rid of the fifteen percent and go to a fee structure, the idea was to enable our development community to to be able to work within those market constraints. And I think that it is working, actually, to tell you the truth. The number of units that have been produced in in Sacramento since we took that action has really gone up dramatically. But again, still not to where we would like it to be. You know, a lot of the pressures, and I've said this to council a few times, a lot of the pressures in the rental market and the housing market generally have to do with outside factors like the pressure of telework and people moving into Sacramento from the Bay Area who find our prices rather appealing compared to their marketplace. All of these things are important to keep in mind as we develop these policies because it would be very counterproductive to set up policies that did not allow for, as you said, all income levels. We need housing at all income levels and we can't take our eye off of that when we think about the marketplace. You know, all of that being said, you're exactly right. We need a lot of housing to keep up with the demand in Sacramento. And we need to keep those doors open. So, you know, as we look at varied housing types, you know, there is, of course, a lot of controversy, as the mayor said, about our one zoning and potential changes to that. I I think our policy direction is good, but we do have to be very mindful of the repercussions of these things. But really, the bigger market forces are going to be a guide, I think, to how we proceed. This is a really great piece of work, Greta, and I thank you for all your time. Greg, Tom, everybody has worked on it, Matt. And and I think you've done a good job and, you know, of course, we have to comply with the state and we're doing that. So onward and forward, we're going to have some very interesting conversations ahead. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me start. Thank you, Greta. Thank you, Greg, as well, and Matt for your countless hours and time of going to community meetings, discussing all of these elements and helping, you know, bring the community up to speed in our process that we're required to do by by state law here and to give us some 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 focal point and direction. I did want to, you know, I think, to highlight the that the inclusion of the construction skill education alignment and and making that a a bigger point about how we as a as a as a city and as a member of the Sacramento Employment Training Agency start to look at at really putting more emphasis in 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 this area. And I I bring it up because we know that there's a skills gap that, you know, that for even people to get into an apprenticeship program. The demand is high for for these. I think Councilmember Harris brought this up. We're at right now, we're at some constraints about getting enough workers for the type of projects that we need. And so I I want to highlight the need for that being a stronger guiding principle. I know it's second to last on our housing policy, but I think it's one that has mutual beneficial goals of addressing the wage gap issue along with our challenges for the workforce. And and housing and the need for affordable housing is a combination of that. It's the lack of supply of housing and also the fact that we have significant challenges for wages in the area. I think we can meet our 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 goals by putting a little more emphasis on that as well. We're not an educational institution, but we we are members of the workforce training agency and I think we can do that. The second piece I'd like to see a little more here is is highlighted is to highlight the the challenges that some of our older parts of our city, many of our commercial corridors have still face major infrastructure challenges. It is in in some parts of our city, like the central city area, you know, the economics make infill easier than in other areas that might have more challenges. If you're, you know, trying to build, you know, in the edges of the commercial corridors, you know, Stockton Boulevard, Marysville Boulevard, areas where they weren't designed and the infrastructure costs are higher. I'd like to make sure that we're we're also highlighting that highlighting those challenges so that when, you know, if this if the our region does get financing, say, from a program like Green Means Go that I know are are seven-county region, six-county region is advocating for, that we're we're geared to do that, too. So, and Greta, I don't, I was trying to kind of piece this through, but I I think that is a unique challenge, given the fact that we're one of one of the older cities in the state. We have aging infrastructure that makes it much more expensive to address and be able to to guide the development of more infill housing. But maybe if you could talk a little bit about that, because I I do think that that is an area where a lot of parts of our city could benefit from making it easier for housing development.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. Program H ten was not highlighted as maybe as as much as I could have in our presentation, but program H ten targeted infill infrastructure strategies is is just about that, about making sure that we understand our existing capacity and and conditions along our commercial corridors and have, you know, a plan for when we do have state funding coming down the line. And we also have related policies like the program H nine facilitate appropriate development through specific plans and commercial corridor action plans. So helping to make those, you know, focus those plans in on where we need that that infrastructure funding.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I think that's a very direction. Oh, go ahead. Yes, Tom.
I just wanted to build on that. Thank you for for just a moment. Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. And we have been over the past few years undertaking infrastructure studies in different parts of the city in order to get a better understanding of the needs that we have for water, sewer, drainage, and other infrastructure improvements. And and we know that we need to do more of that work and we are working on that as part of the Stockton Boulevard planning that that you're aware of. We're also, we've done some initial studies on the Del Paso Boulevard area and are looking at drainage issues in North Sacramento, which is a major issue in that area that is a constraint on housing development. And there are other parts of the city as well that have older infrastructure or infrastructure that needs to be expanded. And so that's very important for us to keep our eye on on the the need to complete those studies and then to secure funding to improve that infrastructure, because I think that'll be a great incentive for housing development.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
One more program to highlight that I missed is program H forty-four, which is a continuation from a previous housing element that will continue to pursue funding to provide critical infrastructure amenities and services in areas targeted for inclusive economic and community development. So that's the other program that's related to that.
Well, thanks, Greta. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Geta. Just a a couple of comments just to take it back to the numbers. I mean, Seuss, this is a a housing element is for eight years going forward, correct?
Yes, Mayor, two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-nine.
Okay, and when I look at the quantified objectives, the numbers are daunting. It is forty-five thousand units of new plus units of new construction. But let's focus on where the need again is the greatest, over five thousand extremely low income, over five thousand very low income, and over six thousand low income. So I agree with Councilmember Harris's premise as far as it goes that the market here matters. We cannot make policies that will result in us not being able to try to meet those numbers, but equally important to the market is political will. Because this document either sits on a proverbial dusty shelf or it is a real guidepost where we hold ourselves and our city accountable to moving every year towards these production numbers through whatever policies are necessary in order to achieve it. So if I would just say to all of us, if we're against one strategy, then it is incumbent upon us to be for a series of other realistic strategies that are going to help us get to the number here. And that's why I thought it was important to have this discussion here today and to all put these numbers up on your, you know, up on your walls or or somewhere where every couple of days you can look at just how large this challenge is. And and we've got to make progress. That's why thirty-one million dollars in a housing trust fund? What a nice start is not nearly enough. We all know that. Thank you. Really appreciate it. That's the item for today. If there aren't other any other comments on this, that is the agenda for this afternoon's workshop. Are there council ideas and questions for items not on the agenda? Are there? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. I wasn't sorry, I was trying to make up my mind if I should stay at this meeting or the five P M. meeting if I wanted to ask a question about the cooling centers.
About the cooling centers. Um, well, since that involves shelter of some kind and housing, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't quite make up my mind. I want to thank city staff for working hard to set that up because I know it's a lot to get those things moving. I also appreciate and want to reiterate in case folks miss the announcement that it would be open for an additional day starting on Wednesday since the heat will start sooner than expected. But I did want to ask, and I don't know if it's best to start with Daniel Bowers with our emergency services or with the city managers representatives, but wanted to see about whether or not we could open additional locations. I've gotten a few inquiries from folks who are concerned, or maybe if we could talk about like a transportation partnership with RT to get folks to some of these centers that might be far away. And then I also got some questions just about ours. I think folks are looking at the hourly forecast and they're worried the centers might close a little early and we're wondering if we had any options of keeping them open later. So I don't know, Daniel, or if someone from the city manager's office would like to answer that.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmember. Just for silence, I'll go ahead and jump in. We absolutely do have some backup sites available that we can activate on a circumstance where we're starting to near occupancy or if a site, you know, becomes untenable. For example, the A C goes out or something like that, we would transport people to a alternate site. Due to past occupancy, we don't deem that we're going to need to activate those sites right now. We also have some increased presence from across the county, including places like Seventh Day Adventist, some of the heart centers that are also expanding availability. I also want to put it out there and notably that this is reopening day today or yesterday. I'm sorry, today. And so tomorrow will be in the second day of that, and so we'll have public libraries available for folks to go into as well as government lobbies and other buildings and such. So there's going to be a lot more options than there were, say, last year during some of the heat waves. And then I want to just to adjust that hour component there, we are opening from And then I want to, just to adjust that hour component there, we are opening from noon to eight o'clock P M. And so per the National Weather Service forecast, temperatures will start to drop back down well before eight o'clock P M. So and just for everybody's awareness, and those of you who have been in the cooling centers or warming centers in the past, I know Councilmember Valenzuela, you're you're well versed at that and spend a lot of time in there, as most of everybody really on this call has, but we don't you know, right at the eight o'clock hour, just kick everybody out. It usually takes a good, you know, thirty, forty-five minutes or so. We work with folks. As most of you all have seen inside these facilities, sometimes we have people with access and functional needs. So we're helping to move them gently and carefully for their accommodations. So just because the ending hour is right at eight o'clock, there's generally some, some consideration to the temperatures as well.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. And yeah, I just want to suggest maybe because the person, one of the first people who reached out to me was actually more worried about some seniors that they knew, as well as not just folks who aren't housed. So, yeah, I guess if we wanted to connect with those writers, and I know obviously the shell, you've got a lot of Sam in their house, but I mean, different expertises, just to see if there's any gaps in the system to make sure everybody has a safe place to be. But I just, I want to thank you again for all you're doing. I know it's a lot to manage, but wanted to relay those comments I was getting on Twitter and such and see where we were at. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. And one of the locations we are activating, as you know, is the Heart Senior Center. Through partnerships with New Motion, we have a mutual agreement for them to support our community centers. And really, anytime we activate these sites, whether they're clean air centers, cooling centers, warming centers, or so forth, we've also used them at our vaccine sites down with Councilmember Bang's area panel center. But New Motion has graciously provided free of charge to the city mechanical wheelchairs to support folks who come in with access and functional needs, including the seniors, and we put those to use. So at each of our sites that we activate, we will have wheelchair kit and Zoe to provide a support to those with access and functional needs and the whole community regardless of their condition.
That's amazing. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Daniel, Mr. Bowers, for really being on top of this. And I know next week you're going to give a more formal report, and you know, at that point, I want to, I do, since Councilmember Valenzuela has raised it, I'll just give my own little tease into what I want to talk about next week. It's absolutely appropriate that we are doing what you are doing and necessary. But if you remember, the council talked about getting away from the temperature-based criteria and opening year-round respite centers. And we've shifted, obviously, to safe ground in many respects, appropriately so, because that's our one of our great hopes here. But I think Mr. Bowers and the city manager and the city team probably need more help from us as colleagues in terms of the potential of, of opening more actual indoor respite centers year-round for people, where triage, by the way, should and can take place. So I'll save that for next week. Let's get through the the hot couple of days. But I think that's an issue that we want to discuss as a, as a city council next week. All right? Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, to that point, in the interim, over these next two days, I do want folks to, in the community, to know that we are looking after the the community members that are at that safe ground. Just a couple hours ago, myself and members of the Department of Community Response and some of the the folks who are working those sites, we dropped off dozens of cases of water at those locations to disperse to the folks who may not feel comfortable or want to leave their supplies or make it into a cool center. So we are looking out for the people that are across the community. And we'll have that, that effort going over the next several days. We are park rangers who will disperse water out across the community as well as a lot of our advocacy groups, including folks in Department of Community Response.
Also, Mr. Mayor, just on that note, by Friday, I think I'm accessing about five hundred cases of water. So my colleagues, if, if there's a need, please let me know. And I can confirm that with all of you guys on Thursday. So if there's a need, just send me an email. And, and at the end, we can do the same thing the following week, just F Y I. That's it.
Very good. All right, we do have one caller from the public. Go ahead.
May I have my caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council. This is Cordelia Burke with the North State Building Industry Association, the voice of the home building industry. I'm actually calling about the draft housing element. I was disconnected earlier. I'm calling just to applaud the city and the very aggressive housing element. We really appreciate the pro-housing policies that's included in the housing element. We do have concerns about the, the conversation and idea about mandatory inclusionary zoning. We think that policy is very problematic and really would impact housing production. Looking forward to working with the council, you, Mayor, and the city staff on really pushing forward, continuing to push forward pro-housing policies. The only way for us to achieve housing affordability is to increase the supply of housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
All right, members, if there's nothing else to come before the housing authorities, City Council, we do have a closed session at four o'clock and then council meeting, the regular council meeting at five. We are adjourned. Thank you.